Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This meeting is being held pursuant to Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law. It's being held by teleconference, is being recorded, and there's a public access number that has been published in advance to the meeting.
Call meeting order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Michael Yurden. Michael Yurden. Pass. Herbert Yurden. Edward Gilson. Edward Gilson.
Here.
David Holst.
Here.
Roy Rehill.
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
John Martino.
Present.
Bradley Trudell.
Here.
Paul House. Paul House.
Here.
James Wetherup.
Here.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
Present.
Linda Lockwood.
Here.
Richard Klein.
Present.
Patrick Twist.
Patrick Twist is here.
Stephen Walpole.
Here.
Nathan Emmons.
Here.
Thomas Drum.
Here.
Lori Mangano.
Here.
Robert Wilmot. Robert Wilmot.
Absent excused.
Rashad.
Here.
Tim Stahl.
I'm here.
Terry Wilber.
Here.
James Karosik.
Here.
Morris Sorbello.
Here.
Mark Greco.
I'm here.
Ralph Stacy Jr.
I am here.
Back to our pass. Michael Yurden. Michael Yurden. Absent excused.
Here. I'm here.
Okay. We have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All over meeting today from our homes throughout the county to promote safe social distancing, as we can see we're six feet apart ourselves, I would ask that we stand together through the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America.
One nation.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Figures are known. Public figures of the revolution of the day due to the format of the meeting, we will dispense to the public camera. Moving on to reports. Are there any reports from county officials in the Department of Health?
Jan Jan Dain is here.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Let me, let me ask Dain first to give you some numbers, and then we talk about our, this COVID-19 strategy, and how about this?
Okay, so as of this morning, we were at seventeen positive cases. We've had three hundred and ninety-seven residents either scheduled for testing or tested already. Again, we have the seventeen positive. Two hundred and eighty-six negative results have come in, and we were pending ninety-one test results still. We have ninety-nine residents under precautionary quarantine, and sixty-four residents under mandatory isolation or quarantine, and we have one resident that has recovered and has been released from isolation.
Okay, this is the current situation, and actually, this COVID-19 activity in our department already started working on it for more than a month ago, and our staff included Dain, and already worked without weekend for three weeks, and even not a day took off. And all our efforts is focused on reduce or mitigate community impact from this virus. And here, you can see a curve here, and you can see a curve. This solid area is if we don't do any intervention, and the case number will increase drastically, and then to the peak, and reduce. And this is what we don't want to see. So all our efforts start about, more than two weeks ago, we started tracking whose travel come back from outside the country, and identify them with information from CDC and the State Health Department, and this already lasted more than two, three weeks. And also, we do community mitigation, not just isolate these people. We also, like Governor already, put the social distancing and individual hand washing. The purpose is two purposes. One is we hope this peak delay, you can see, we want to push the peak delay, and more drastically, we wanted to push the peak case number down. So we generally, we call it, in our department, we always call flatten the curve. This shaded area is the flatten the curve. This is what we want to do. Flatten the curve, and give time, and reduce the number, let our healthcare system to handle it. Next slide, please. Here, this is a table. I updated to March twenty-fifth. Okay, it's not the most updated table, and different country, different performance. And this table really can show why we do so. And the blue lighted line is Italy and Spain, okay? And this pink highlighted Germany and Norway. And the three yellow highlighted is East Asia country, South Korea, Japan, and Taiwan. So what we tried to, I tried to put here, make a comparison is because Italy and Spain, their healthcare system collapsed when virus hit them. So they have high death rate, high death number. Spain the same. Comparatively, Germany and Norway, they, when virus hit their countries, they hold their healthcare system. So you can see they have low death rate, and only two among a million population, three among a million population, and their death rate and death number at the total cases is much smaller than Italy and Spain. If you look at the East Asia country, the advantage of this maintain, maintain this healthcare system more dominant, and you can see. So this is the principle, guide us mitigate this COVID-19 activities in Oscego County. And what, what we have done is, yes, our team monitored all the activity, people come back, and monitor them, and isolate them, or quarantine them, and this already performed for more than two weeks. And at the beginning, several cases, they're all travel related. And most recently, as you know, we already have community acquired spread. And I can say, yes, where is the virus? Virus is in our backyard, everywhere. And that's a big game changer. And I'm very pleased, end of last week, Chairman, yes, announced, and this is a community acquired, and everybody is diligently do social distancing and washing hands, and give time to our healthcare system. And the key is really, we needed to maintain our first responder, like EMS, law enforcement, and our healthcare system. And this I know, over the past more than a week also, and we had a very big pressure, why not release the number, why not release the location? And we insisted, and yeah, for privacy reason, and for avoid discrimination, and we didn't release it. But gradually, we will release. This morning, we already released where the, where's the case, confirmed the case, and where's the test that the case came from. And it's already spread all over the county, and this is my prepared presentation, and Dain, you have any add-on?
No, I just let you know that our call center is up and running, and has been running for about two weeks straight, throughout the weekends as well. And call volume varies a little bit. Yesterday, I think we had our record high with one hundred and sixty-four calls. Sunday, I think we had about one hundred and one. Saturday was about sixty-some. So it varies, but we've been staffing that, and hopefully getting folks questions answered, and getting them transferred to our nurses to be scheduled for testing, authenticated.
Oh, let me add here, and actually, we have two phone lines. One phone line is open for the public, and another phone line is open to the healthcare providers. And this phone line, I was told, our phone line waiting time is much more shorter than state one-eight-hundred line. And our nurse line is more busier than our public line, is because so many clinicians, yes, wanted to talk with our nurse. At county level, we, as an agency, authorize the testing. So a lot of explanation, and a lot of consultation, and a lot of decision-making. So this, this is what, what we are doing. And any legislators have any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, thank you for your report. There being no questions, I will move on to Mr. Church, County Administrator, has the slide.
Good afternoon. We wanted to put up this slide because it relates to the four resolutions that you are being asked to vote on today. You're very familiar with our normal organizational structure of government, with the twenty-three departments, the legislature, and all reporting to the public. All that is still in place and working to provide the core services that government provides, which have not been closed by executive order. But when you have a state of emergency, or a public health emergency like we're in now, this structure that you see on your screens comes into play and runs in parallel with our normal government structure. The, at the apex, the command unit, that's our incident command, by the way, this is, this is what's called the incident command system. It's universally utilized across the United States after decades of development and real-world experience in emergencies. This is how governments organize themselves, or organize their response to emergency situations. At the top is your command unit, that includes your incident commander. We are in a state of emergency, so the incident commander is the chairman of the legislature. We're also in a public health emergency, so he is joined by our public health director. The chairman's been doing a great job, has made some difficult decisions, and our public health director, I just want you to know, we're fortunate, and that our public health director also happens to be an epidemiologist, which is the study of disease and viruses, and how they spread, and what the response to them should be. So we're very fortunate in that. The command unit is supported by information and work by the four pillars you see below it: operations, logistics, planning, and administration and finance. The command unit relies on the information and the work of those four areas to make decisions, and once those decisions are made, that flows back down to those four units to implement. The, what we're here about today is the command unit and the administration and finance unit. You'll be asked to vote on a resolutions that strengthen those two portions of our incident command system. One resolution appoints an emergency management director, which has been vacant for a couple of months. That is the primary advisor to the chairman of the legislature in the command unit. The administration and finance unit, in this particular instance, has four primary objectives. One is to track and account for coronavirus-related expenses, to track and seek out revenues to help us respond to that. Also, in that expense portion is procurement of supplies that our logistics people get out to our operations people, which, as you've been watching the news, you know is critically important. Also, human resources, to allocate our work staff to where they're needed, in case we have to reallocate nonessential personnel into essential roles. And finally, the fourth function will be budgeting and financial recovery. The other three resolutions affect expenses and revenues today. The first is to set up a, an account that is specific to coronavirus response, so that we can make purchases out of a singular account. It helps us track and create a master account for reimbursement purposes later down the road. The other two are coronavirus revenue resolutions to help us pay for some things, some expenses we've already incurred. So those four resolutions strengthen the command, and they strengthen the administration and finance portions of the incident command system that is used to, for the, to respond to the coronavirus incident we're in now. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
There's being no questions, we'll move on to standing committee.
Okay.
The reports of special committee. No, thank you. Moving on to resolutions of the day. Resolution SM1 by legislator Martino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, unappropriated fund balance, COVID response.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As our administrator just explained, this is five hundred thousand dollars going into a separate account line, so we can track and stay on top of what is spent through our COVID, COVID-19 expenses and possible reimbursements.
Another discussion, legislator Shaw.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, what is the current fund balance? Can you hear me?
Yes, I heard you, legislator. It's currently in the eighteen.
What is it?
All right, I've unmuted here. It's approximately eighteen million at this point, which is just a snapshot of the particular day that they run the query, but I see Phil Church is, is ready to answer if we need be.
The, I haven't seen the treasurer's annual report yet, but I believe we ended 2019 with about twenty-five million. This, that fluctuates, the fund balance fluctuates throughout the year. He did tell me that we are at eighteen. Of course, that's after we make payments, like our debt payment, and things like that. I'm also, as I, as I mentioned, the administrative end of this incident commands tracking what revenues may be coming in. I believe that there is, the federal government has allocated a certain amount of money to us. I'm trying to get that verified. It is in a few million. The, what we are, for now, we are fine and can afford our COVID response. What we're going to be looking at down the road, within a month or two, is what happens with our sales tax revenues, tax revenues. That may require some adjustments down the road. But right now, our fund balance is, and our reserves are at a point where we can safely approve this resolution and get the supplies that we need to, to our front line.
Thank you. Will we still have the April ninth?
I didn't hear the question.
Will we still have the April ninth public hearing?
That's a question for Mr. Chairman and the county attorney.
Certainly, legislator Shaw. We will make sure that's an ongoing discussion. We will certainly keep you apprised of whatever that determination is, just as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I would request a roll call vote, please. Thank you. Roll call vote. Will the clerk call the roll?
Michael Yurden. Michael Yurden. Pass. Herbert Yurden.
Affirmative.
Edward Gilson.
I vote yes.
David Holst.
I vote yes.
Roy Rehill.
Mr. Chairman, I vote yes.
John Martino.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I vote in the affirmative.
Bradley Trudell.
I vote yes.
Paul House.
I vote yes.
James Wetherup.
I vote yes.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
I vote yes.
Linda Lockwood. Linda Lockwood. Fast.
I vote yes.
Yes. Richard Klein.
I vote yes.
Patrick Twist.
I vote yes.
Stephen Walpole.
I vote yes.
Nathan Emmons.
I vote yes.
Thomas Drum.
Yes.
Lori Mangano.
I vote yes.
Robert Wilmot have absent excused. Rashad.
Yes.
Tim Stahl.
I vote yes.
Terry Wilber.
I vote yes.
James Karosik.
I vote yes.
Morris Sorbello.
I vote yes.
Mark Greco.
I vote yes.
Ralph Stacy Jr.
I vote yes.
Return to the pass. Michael Yurden. Michael Yurden. We marked absent and excused. That is twenty-three in favor, two absent.
We have a resolution SM2 by legislator Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I present the following resolution for your consideration.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Second by legislator Correct. Will clerk read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification, Health Department COVID-19 funding from Health Research Incorporated.
So this is a hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. It is being received as a grant for COVID-19 response activities. The funding will be used to support public health staff in incident management, information management, counter-majors, and mitigation, surge management, and biosurveillance. The legislators each have in their packet a breakdown of what particular budget lines this money will go into, which will help us pay for some of the expenses.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Michael Yurden. Michael Yurden. Mark is pass. Herbert Yurden.
Yes.
Edward Gilson.
Mr. Chairman, I vote yes.
David Holst. David Holst. Mark has a pass. Roy Rehill.
Mr. Chairman, I vote yes.
John Martino.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Bradley Trudell.
I vote yes.
Paul House.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
James Wetherup.
I vote yes.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I vote yes.
Linda Lockwood.
I vote yes.
Richard Klein.
I vote yes.
Patrick Twist.
I vote yes.
Stephen Walpole.
I vote yes.
Nathan Emmons.
I vote yes.
Thomas Drum.
I vote yes.
Lori Mangano.
I vote yes.
Robert Wilmot. Robert Wilmot. Mark absent excused. Rashad.
Yes.
Tim Stahl.
I vote yes.
Terry Wilber.
I vote yes.
James Karosik.
I vote yes.
Morris Sorbello.
I vote yes.
Mark Greco.
I vote yes.
Ralph Stacy Jr.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Return to the pass. Michael Yurden.
I vote yes.
Vote yes. David Holst.
I vote yes.
Mr. Chairman, twenty-four in favor, one absent.
Very much. Resolution passes. May we move on to resolution SM3 by legislator Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution for your considerations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I, I second. Herbert Yurden.
Here, Herbert Yurden. So will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification, Health Department, Public Health Emergency Preparedness, Additional COVID-19 Funding.
So this is a allocation of funding for So this is an allocation of funding for $15,000, which once again will help us. This is an annual public health emergency preparedness grant from Health Research Incorporated. And I would urge that we pass this and allocate the money.
Thank you. Thank you. Roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. There was a question. The screen was not open.
Oh, sorry. I would rescind my motion for a roll call vote. Thank you. Legislator Schott.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, do you know currently how many beds are available at Oswego Hospital and how many ventilators and protective gear?
Mr. Chairman, I can help. This is Phil. I could help with that question if you'd like. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I do know that the Oswego Hospital's search plan increases their number of beds by 65%.
Okay, and we don't know the ventilator number.
I can get that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? 发起一个 motion and request a roll call vote, Mr. Chairman.
Michael Yurden. Michael Yurden. Pass.
I vote yes.
Michael Yurden, is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Herbert Yurden.
It's a yes.
Edward Gilson.
Mr. Chairman, I vote yes.
David Holst.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Roy Rehill.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
John Martino.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Bradley Trudell.
I vote yes.
Paul House.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
James Weatherup.
I vote yes.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Linda Lockwood.
I vote yes.
Richard Klein.
I vote yes.
Patrick Twist.
I vote yes.
Stephen Walpole.
I vote yes.
Nathan Emmons.
I vote yes.
Thomas Drum.
I vote yes.
Lori Mangano.
I vote yes.
Robert Wilmot, absent, excused. Marie Shad.
Yes.
Tim Stahl.
I vote yes.
Terry Wilber.
I vote yes.
James Crossick.
I vote yes.
Morris Sorbello.
I vote yes.
Mark Greco.
I vote yes.
Ralph Stacy Jr.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, that's 24 in favor, one absent. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I will ask that anybody who took control of the screen, please relinquish that so I have access to it again, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution SM4 by legislator Wilber. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution and urge. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, this is legislator Trudell. I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a second. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution appointing director of emergency management for the county of Oswego.
Mr. Chairman, this resolution will be amended. I will make that motion to amend, place the name of Captain Paul Mazzuso at a grade 40, step 16, with a salary of $65,575.
I second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
It was seconded by legislator Martino. Will the clerk take a roll call vote on the amendment?
On the amendment, Michael Yurden.
I vote yes.
Herbert Yurden.
I vote yes.
Edward Gilson.
Mr. Chairman, I vote yes.
David Holst.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Roy Rehill.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
John Martino.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Bradley Trudell.
I vote yes.
Paul House.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
James Weatherup.
I vote yes.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Linda Lockwood.
I vote yes.
Richard Klein.
I vote yes.
Patrick Twist.
I vote yes.
Stephen Walpole.
I vote yes.
Nathan Emmons.
I vote yes.
I apologize. Thomas Drum.
I vote yes to the amendment.
Thank you. Lori Mangano.
I vote yes.
Robert Wilmot, absent, excused. Marie Shad.
Yes.
Tim Stahl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I vote yes.
Terry Wilber.
I vote yes.
James Crossick.
I vote yes.
Morris Sorbello.
I vote yes.
Mark Greco.
I vote yes.
Ralph Stacy Jr.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, that is 24 in favor of the amendment and one absent.
The resolution is amended. Is there any discussion? The sponsor of this resolution, we're going to get forward along with a member of the search committee for this. We have a number of very qualified, top position, well, together, huge qualifications with the top role, and the majority of the committee, I say, very common. Now, more forward.
Any other discussion? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to echo accordingly there a little bit. We appreciate this meeting, glad we dropped off all these things, so thank you for that. But more so, I wanted to take to. Not the normal situation for one to come and take any position, so we wish you luck in the court.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Roll call vote, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Michael Yurden.
I vote yes.
Herbert Yurden.
I vote yes.
Edward Gilson.
Mr. Chairman, I vote yes.
David Holst.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Roy Rehill.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
John Martino.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Bradley Trudell.
I vote yes.
Paul House.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
James Weatherup.
I vote yes.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Linda Lockwood.
I vote yes.
Richard Klein.
I vote yes.
Patrick Twist.
I vote yes.
Stephen Walpole.
I vote yes.
Nathan Emmons.
I vote yes.
Thomas Drum.
I vote yes.
Lori Mangano.
I vote yes.
Robert Wilmot. Absent, excused. Marie Shad.
Yes.
Tim Stahl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I vote yes.
Terry Wilber.
I vote yes.
James Crossick.
I vote yes.
Morris Sorbello.
I vote yes.
Mark Greco.
I vote yes.
Ralph Stacy Jr.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, that's 24 in favor, one absent.
There are no more resolutions. Is there any unfinished business? Can you answer legislator Schott's question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Legislator Schott asked about the bed capacity and ventilators at Oswego Health. Under their surge plan, they have increased beds from 78 to 129 and ventilator beds from 8 to 16.
Thank you, Phil.
Any other discussions on any unfinished business? Thank you. Moving on, any miscellaneous business? All of my colleagues in the legislature, and I thank you, Chairman, for your leadership on this, through this situation that we're in, along with our county administrator and every single employee who works for the Oswego County agencies or in our employment. You really have stepped up. You definitely share your effort in this time. And to our constituents, we're working day and night with those employees to make sure we protect and keep us all safe during this time of uncertainty. There is a bright spot on the horizon. We are getting there. Let's just work together and practice in social business. In about a dozen, I'd like to thank everyone, and I would like to mention that we're still talking about our weight class, and that's a good thing, and look for the appropriate motion. Thanks for the journey. We stand here.